My right town meeting, can you please take your seats? Thank you. So to begin, we're going to do a roll call to work on our clickers to make sure that they're all operational and everyone is accounted for. So when you have a moment, we're going to do a test trial vote for attendance purposes, although also the real binding attendance is with the town clerks out front. So as a reminder for town meeting members, the green light turns on. If you hit the green button, which is yes, it means you are in attendance. If you hit the red button, it just no, you are not in attendance. And click your button and you'll have about 30 minutes to register. Those who are in the cafeteria, please join us. I'll give you a moment or two. All right, thank you. If you abstain, it means you don't have a preference whether you're here or not. All right, we're going to close it and then we'll scroll through it and check to see if your name is there and that your clicker officially worked. All right. So as town meeting members may be joining us slightly late, they will be counted in when they check in with the clerk's office out front. So night two of the 2022 special town meeting will please come to order. The town meeting requires 100 members for a quorum and having 135 in attendance. I see there is a sufficient number of members present to permit us to open the meeting, and I do so declare, I am Heather Von Mary, your town meeting moderator. Welcome to all. To our town meeting members, welcome back for night two. It was opened on April 25 and recessed to this evening, 7:00 PM at the high school auditorium, auditorium, and here we are. Our goal this evening is to complete all of the business before us for the special town meeting. I do not plan to adjourn until we are done. I want to also welcome again members of town staff, members of boards and committees, town consultants, and our article presenters, as well as residents and other visitors who have joined us tonight. Welcome one and all. The Department of Health has asked me to reiterate that the mask requirements are still in effect, and we ask that for the comfort of those around you, you please wear a mask unless you have a documented medical reason not to. Since the town meeting has last gathered, there has been a tremendous amount of activity bringing out the best of this town. From ANCA Memorial Day Parade and ceremonies to honor our community members who have died while serving for the US military, may we never forget, prom, graduation, all the way to town day ending with an amazing fireworks display today to our special town meeting and today, which marks the 78th anniversary of the historic D-Day operation. On June 6, 1944, the US and allied forces and a handful of our community members and those that we know stormed the beaches of Normandy in France. In honor of the anniversary, I'd like to take a moment of silence. Thank you. As it has been two years since all these activities were available in the full force, it is a joy to see how much our town comes together to support the many facets that define who we are as a community. To our recently graduated seniors, including Annika Berkstrom, who sat as a town meeting representative of precinct three, may you go out into the world and continue to share your voice. Congratulations. A few more announcements before we proceed, we have quite a few. The Winchester Town Day Committee asked me on their behalf to thank the thousands of people who came down town this past weekend to celebrate our community, including many of you. Special thanks to our fire, police, and public works departments, as well as the town administration for their vital and welcome support of a magical day. They have a further grateful shout out to the Winchester High School Track and Field Team and Scout Troop 507 for their hard work. I would be remiss to not return the appreciation to the Winchester Town Day Committee. Thank you for allowing our town's government, including the Communications Committee of Town Meeting, the opportunity to have a presence and share work that is occurring inside Town Hall and our schools, and the opportunity to gather community feedback. The Winchester Town Day Committee is always looking for new ideas and new volunteers. If any board or committee would like a presence at Town Day next year, or any resident would like to share ideas or volunteer, please visit townday.org to sign up. Further, get your calendars out. The Planning Board will be holding two public forums in June to get residents' input on revitalizing North Main Street and visioning for the Holton Street area. They will be presenting ideas about design guidelines for North Main Street's streetscape on June 14, and will be starting their visioning process for the Holton Street area on June 28. Both forums will be via Zoom and links will be available on the town's website at winchester.us. In addition, the Planning Board is looking for volunteers to serve on their master plan implementation committee. They have received 10 applications for their youth representative spot, but only two applications in total for the other eight community seats. Yep, our youth continues to impress. Please reach out to your neighbors and friends. You can always reach the Planning Board for more information at planningboard@winchester.us, and there was a handout on the table as well if you'd like additional information. Also, I would like to point out that there are a handful of other volunteer spots open for various committees, including those that specifically support this body. It includes FinCom and the Personnel Board. This town is run on volunteerism. Please consider giving the gift of yourself and time. If you are interested, you can visit winchester.us. At the bottom of the main page is a quick links to jobs, and the volunteer opportunities are at the bottom of this list. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to reach out to the chairs of the bodies that may interest you or the town clerk's office. Finally, it has brought to my attention that a longstanding town meeting member will be retiring from his service of 33 years to town and this meeting after our adjournment. Mr. Conti from precinct two has been a longstanding staple of town meeting and chair of Government Regulations Committee. If a motion before the meeting is controversial or atypical, you can always count on Mr. Conti to be the first one to speak. My predecessor used to always, almost always call on Mr. Conti first. I always had my guesses of why he was called first, but seeing Mr. Conti now from this podium, he is the first one to rise at all times when he wants to share his voice. He knows the rhythm of the meeting so well that he can be the first to stand, or an earlier use raise his hand at the most appropriate time. Further, when Mr. Conti talks about policy and procedures of the meeting, he is rarely wrong. He has a strong understanding and respect of the tradition that encompasses this meeting. He's known to ask tough questions and push the meeting to look deeper into issues. He also has provided feedback in such a way to make many of the proposed bylaws that have come before this body better for our town. Finally, I would like to say to Mr. Conti, on behalf of many of us, it has been an honor to serve on our legislative body alongside you. May the road ahead bring you much happiness. I hear Mr. Conti may have some parting words for us, which I know he will share when he reaches the podium. So we will continue our meeting with the tradition of the pledge of allegiance. For those members who would like to option to join me, please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, may please be seated. As I like to end my comments, we must bear in mind as we join together as a legislative body of Winchester, not only our personal interests, but also those of our community and each other as a whole. As we deliberate, let each of us here tonight maintain an open mind, an open heart, graciousness when we disagree, and a healthy sense of humor, so that the business of this meeting will not be a source of division among us when our business here is finished. To town meeting members, if any of you are outside of the auditorium, we will be moving quickly through some voice votes. If you'd like to participate, please make your way to the auditorium now. So we have two booklets. We have one that was given to you at the regular town meeting, which is the thin one, and we have a second one, which is a special, which is the thick one. In the thin one in the back is the preliminary motions for the special town meeting. That is where we are going, so it's page 50, but I'm also going to have it put up on the screen for you so you can also see what we are voting on. It is to page 50 of your Town of Winchester 2022 Spring Annual Town Meeting articles in the Town of Winchester 2022 booklet. It has, it's, there's two green covers, so it's hard to distinguish, so we'll call it the skinny green book. It is moved and seconded to adopt the resolution relating to preliminary motions as printed in your motion book, page 51, and also on your screen. These are standard preliminary motions, which we typically undertake. Are you ready for the question? Seeing no one rise, a majority vote of the members presenters required. The question of the approval of the preliminary motion is shown on your screen and printed in your motion book. All those in favor? Are those opposed? The ayes have it. Moving to the newest edition of our green, the skinny, the thick one. We are now moving to Article One of your Town of Winchester 2022 Spring Annual Town Meeting Motion booklet. Are there any reports to be presented? Seeing none, I would like to move to indefinitely postpone Article One. Is there a second? Thank you. It is moved and seconded to indefinitely postpone Article One of the special town meeting. All those in favor? All those opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion is passed. Moving to page one, Article Two of your Town of Winchester 2022 Spring Annual Town Meeting Motion booklet. It is moved and seconded that the select board be authorized to enter into a land development agreement with Winchester Waterfield MM LLC, or another subsidiary or affiliate of Civico Development LLC, in substantially the form approved by the select board on May 16, 2022, as posted on the town's website at https://www.winchester.us/919/waterfield-lot-development, and to enter into a lease in substantially the form provided as an exhibit to such agreement. This article authorizes the select board to enter into the development agreement and lease for the land referenced by many as the Waterfield Lot. It is across from the Town Common, next to the train station, and next door to the buildings which house a handful of businesses, including Studio on the Common and D'Agostino's. The proponent of this, of the motion is the select board. On behalf of the select board is member Mr. Michael Bettencourt. Without objection, the member has requested an extension prior to time being called of 15 minutes. Seeing no objection, the proponent will have up to 15 minutes to speak on the motion before us. Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, town meeting. Article Two comes before you tonight to approve the public-private partnership between the town and Civico for the construction of the housing development in the town center. The select board voted unanimously to recommend favorable action in Article Two, which more specifically authorized the select board to enter into a land development agreement and ground lease for the Waterfield parcel. The Waterfield parcel is just about one acre of land in the Center Business District adjacent to the MBTA commuter rail station. One of the tricky parts of this site is the MWRA sewer line that runs right down the middle and must remain accessible at all times to the state. So what is an LDA and ground lease? The land development agreement governs the relationship between Civico and the town while Civico performs its due diligence, finalizes plans, seeks permits and approvals, and confirms financing for the project. Then the ground lease takes over and governs the relationship between Civico and the town after permitting financing through the construction phase and during the operation of the project for the 99-year term. At this point, I think it's helpful to step back and identify the town's policy objectives and history here. In 2016, there was a public hearing on the 296-unit Forest Ridge 40B application that became extremely divisive. As a result of this hearing, the town moderator directed the select board to respond to pressure from hostile 40Bs by developing a plan to address our local affordable housing crisis. The housing production plan is the roadmap we created for building affordable housing units in Winchester. The select board developed this plan to commit to building more than 40 units of housing per year as required by the state to avoid hostile 40Bs and maintain safe harbor. The HPP puts the town in control of what gets built and where it is built. As long as we build units, we will stay in safe harbor. After being in safe harbor for the past two years, Winchester's safe harbor protection expired in March of 2022. In 2015, town meeting rezoned the Center Business District to meet specific policy objectives. The goal was to support the town center by attracting residents to new housing options. The zoning identified three planned unit developments, or PUDs, where we would focus our attention. PUD one is the Waterfield Lot. This focus on bringing residential development to the town center was one of the main reasons the MBTA was willing to invest more than $55 million in the reconstruction of the town center train station. The MBTA is focused on investment in communities who are committed to bringing affordable housing near public transportation, and so are we. One of the things that we hear most often is that these projects seem to come out of nowhere. This project actually started back in 2010 with the Town Center Housing Study, first phase of the master plan, and the Waterfield Concept Design Study. So this laid the groundwork for the rezoning of the Center Business District in 2015. Between 2018 and 2019, the Select Board, Housing Partnership Board, and Planning Board worked together with Mass Housing to develop a housing production plan and received town meeting approval for affordable housing at the Waterfield Lot. The town first developed an RFQ, or Request for Qualifications, to determine who had the background, experience, and expertise to build affordable housing in this difficult location. We pre-qualified nine respondents who met our criteria. In 2020, we issued an RFP to those nine developers, and five responded to the proposal. Some who submitted the proposal did not meet our requirements and were disqualified. Subsequently, in spring of 2021, town meeting authorized the select board to enter in a land development agreement with Civico. Soon thereafter, a public referendum narrowly overturned the town meeting vote. From there, we developed the Waterfield Task Force made of five residents who evaluated the project and made recommendations to the select board. You can see the vote totals in parentheses for these recommendations. The green boxes are the recommendations that are implemented as part of the art, of part of Article Two after the select board continued negotiations with Civico. One of the great benefits of the project after negotiation was a deeper level of affordability and more affordable units. So some of the other issues that remain open are the increased building height, which from our analysis would have shifted the economics of the project and returned less revenue for the town, as the project is already at the maximum for the low-income housing tax credits from the state. And further, there was concern about the neighborhood impact for a taller building, as well as increased parking. A shorter-term ground lease would mean that we would need to reissue the RFP as it changed an essential term, and the 99-year lease is really the industry standard and what's expected for these projects. The question of reissuing the RFP, I think Civico's initial submission was far and away the best proposal, and we wanted to see if we could amend the proposal to resolve some of the deficits identified by the community and the task force before we issued, which we believe we did with Article Two. So what's changed since the spring of 2021? As you can see, the total number of units are the same, 60 units. The units below 60% area median income have increased from 32 to 40. This means the percentage of low-income units have shifted from 53% to 67%. The parking was a major focus of the task force recommendations as well, and that increased from 85 to 119 spaces. So the gross square footage decreased slightly because the gatehouse building was removed, and the restail space was removed as part of that. One of the other benefits of the renegotiation was Civico agreed to demolish the Chamber of Commerce building, which would have been at real high expense for the town to do that. It's really expensive to demolish those kind of buildings. So the acquisition price also increased from $1 million to 1.5 million. The percentage rent increased from 10% to 15%, and the capital event rate, rent also increased from 15% to 25%. We'll talk more about that later. So overall, the revised project design is what you see here, a four-story, four-story building, 60,000 square feet, 60 units, 40 affordable units, and 20 market rate, and 119 parking spaces divided up into 48 private and 71 public. Just to give you an idea of the residential unit count, 50% of the units are studios or one-bedroom units, and only six units are three bedrooms. So to the question of the school impact, with our recent decline in school enrollment, the impact is very easily manageable for our school facilities. When we talk about the different levels of affordability, they are based on these categorical income levels for the range of household size. As you can see, for a family of four at 60%, that's less than $85,000 per year. There are currently no rentals in Winchester that would be affordable for a family at that size and income level. And the financial terms we'll go over as well, that change. Civico will now pay $1 million to the town on the ground lease commencement date. The payoff rent Civico will pay off to the town in the amount of $500,000, and equals installments of up to 8% of free cash flow per year until it's paid in full. The percentage rate, beginning in the first fiscal year following completion and continuing semi-annually, the tenant will pay 15% of its net operating revenue to the town. In the event of a capital event, the town will be paid 25% of the excess profit. The Town's Affordable Housing Trust agrees to loan Civico $500,000, and that will be paid back while accruing interest at a rate no less than 5% per year. So again, the proceeds to the town, 1.5 million on the acquisition. Real estate taxes over the next 15 years are estimated in excess of $3 million. The funds coming from the supplemental ground lease are nearly $400,000. The repayment of the Affordable Housing Trust with interest at refinancing, $236,000 to be estimated, and refinancing proceeds estimated at just under $500,000. So the total projected 15-year cash return to the town is $5,709,128. So we also included the value for the parking amenities that were added, the construction costs and the maintenance. So we value the total projects of the town at nearly $8 million over this period of time. There's a question about local preference. By request of the developer, the Department of Housing and Community Development can identify up to 70% of the units with a local preference. One of the factors in determining that percentage is the availability of affordable housing locally. Because of the long waiting list for affordable housing units in Winchester, some more than five years, Winchester would be a good candidate for a high percentage of local preference units. And in fact, one of the recent projects that Civico built in Lincoln received 70% as well, based on their needs locally, which are similar to ours. Next up, Chris Galetta, a member of Affordable Housing Trust, is going to go over the financial pro forma. Chris? He's, he's mine. Yeah, yeah, he's at the end of mine. Be careful with this.
Thank you. As Mike said, my name is Chris Galetta. I'm a member of the Affordable Housing Task Force. I've been asked to just quickly run through the pro forma that Civico has provided, and hopefully give a grounding for us to have future discussions later tonight. A couple of things just to run through quickly in terms of the overall cost of the project and the returns. They're anticipating total cost of about $30 million to build the project. That's about $470,000 per unit if you exclude the land costs, and that's a reasonable number in today's construction cost environment. As we look at the makeup of the project, as Mike noted, affordable units represent about, they do represent 40 out of the 60 units. If we think about that in terms of revenue, however, the affordable units make up roughly half of the income from the project. So about $700,000 in income from the market rate units, and $700,000 in income from the various affordable units. Remember that the affordable units are statutorily set in terms of the income, so the amount of exposure to market forces and rental forces for the project is limited by the number and the fact that there is market rate, excuse me, affordable units in the project. From a budget perspective and a profit perspective at the project, that $1.4 million in revenue is reduced by what are reasonable and industry standard assumptions for vacancy of 5% and operating expenses of about $10,000 per unit, which is a good rule of thumb for a multifamily project such as this. The result of that is net operating income, so cash flow before payment of debt of $800,000. Is that a good number? A market rate rental apartment project in today's environment would be built to 5% to 6% return on cost. Return on cost is the ratio of net operating income to the total project cost, effectively the annual return to an investor before debt. So a market rate project would again be in that 5% to 6% range. This project at $800,000, over $29 million, is about 2.7% return. So that gap is why affordable housing projects like this one need such extensive subsidies to be economically viable. As we look at the sources of where the $29 million comes from, you get a good sense of those kinds of subsidies that we're talking about. So the developer putting in about $600,000 of cash equity, these local funds are the Affordable Housing Trust funds loan, and we'll get into the terms of that. All of these line items from AHTF down to CBH are various state and federal programs to help facilitate affordable housing projects. So these are state and federal programs that are basically soft debt that are behind the construction loan or the permanent loan, return of equity to the developer. They're kind of at the back of the line, and they're subsidized loan products that you wouldn't typically see in a development project. As we'll talk about, the Affordable Housing Trust's loan is in parallel to those state and federal programs. And then finally, up above here, the LIHTC lines, these are the low-income housing tax credits. Again, this is a subsidy program that helps to facilitate these projects whereby the developer receives tax credits that they can then sell and utilize that cash for the development. So that's what this $11 million and change represents. And then finally, seller note, this is the $500,000 of payoff rent from the town, and a permanent loan of $12 million from a third-party lender. In sum, that makes up the $30 million or $29 million and change of sources to build the project. This is extraordinarily difficult to see. There's no good way to put this on the screen, so apologize. No, it's, it's the nature of pro formas and cash flows. I wanted to highlight just a few things here. First of all, these numbers in this first column, year one, some down to that $813,000 of NOI that we've talked about. They've made reasonable market rate assumptions going forward for growth of both income and expenses at 3% per year that won't be right. It'll be more, it'll be less, but it is the typical market standard for cash flows such as this. The project has the $12 million and change of debt that we saw on the first slide, getting paid back annually on a 25-year amortization schedule, which leaves the cash flow that you see here in this line to be split up between the various equity and subsidy programs for repayment. The first priority for that cash flow is two parallel items, return of the developer's equity- Return of the developer's equity and the return of the $500,000 land loan from the town. So, that town's $500,000 gets paid back over a 13-year period, $40,000 a year for the first 12 years, and then the balance of $20,000 in year 13. That is the repayment of the $500,000 loan from the town. And you'll note, as you look at the relationship from free cash flow to that $40,000, there is more than sufficient anticipated cash flow to comfortably pay the town's loan back over that time period. Then we get into a split of the cash flow profit and the refinancing profit, as we've talked about. This is the 15% of the remaining cash flow that goes to the town. So, you see that number growing over time. And then this is the repayment of both the state loans, that 4.75 million of items of various abbreviations and that word salad from the first page, and the repayment of the trust fund loan. As we've noted, that's a $500,000 loan, separate and distinct from the town's land loan. We anticipate, and this will be finalized as part of negotiations with the state and the developer, a 5% interest rate on that loan, and we anticipate getting back a split, 25% to our loan, 75% to the state funding. That is a proportion that is to our benefit. We're only providing about 10% of that, of those funds, and we anticipate getting paid back disproportionately quickly, and we hope to do better than that. We'll talk about that more when we talk about the Affordable Housing Trust loan. The other thing for us to bear in mind, and I apologize, this calculation here is really just to drive down to the funds that the low-income housing tax credit investors receive. They do not get their equity back. They just get a small piece of future profit, this $95,000. Obviously, if this were a market-rate development, you would anticipate that all of that equity would get repaid in the instance of these low-income housing tax credits. It does not. And the thing to highlight here is just the, we saw this on an earlier slide in Michael's presentation, the town's 25% piece of any refinancing or sale proceeds. What they've shown here is just a calculation of what that number might be, assuming a refinancing in year 15. These assumptions are reasonable and as good as any as you would expect, but that suggests that the town should be in line for future cash flow from refinancing of on the order of $466,000. Further, that's also where a good chunk of the repayment of the Affordable Housing Tax, the Affordable Housing Trust funds loan will come from, is these refinancing or sale proceeds in the later years. Thank you.
Thank you. Further on the question, we begin with recommendations for town meetings' consideration from the boards and committees. Recommendation from Finance Committee, Dr. Blackwell.
Thank you, Sam, and thank you, Madam Moderator. So, FinCom's key considerations included the waterfield optimization problem, which I'll explain, a comparison of the updated and original proposals, which you've already seen, so I'll go through that very quickly, the expected project timeline, which you've already seen, so I'll go through that quickly, safe harbor timeline, and project alternatives. So, the waterfield optimization problem, I view as a triangle. You know, it's trying to do a lot. It has affordable housing on one side, which is balanced by the financial return of the town on the other side, and then at the bottom, you have all the other intangibles, parking, retail space, sustainability, et cetera. And if you try to enlarge one side, you necessarily shrink the others. So, it's been optimized from the original proposal, and I think the primary concerns that FinCom has heard, insufficient financial return to the town was one complaint, loss of parking spaces was another. And through negotiations, the developer, the select board, and the town manager's office revised the proposal to increase the purchase price by 500,000, to add 31 parking spaces, public parking spaces, and they changed the mixture of affordable units to provide additional funding, as explained. So, here's a summary of the Waterfield Task Force recommendations, the original proposal, and what was changed to the updated proposal. And just to note, the task force did vote 3-2 in favor of rebidding, but, you know, as Mike explained, the select board and the town manager's office didn't decide to proceed because the developer was ready and willing to negotiate. So, the Waterfield Civicco proposal timeline, as reviewed, started, well, here were, it started much before, 10 years before, not the negotiation, but, you know, the initial concepts. And here we are at the special town meeting. We expect six months of due diligence, should this article pass, and then more time for permitting and financing, and then construction cannot start until the MBTA center project concludes. So, we anticipate the ground lease to commence in the spring of 2024, and then the construction to take two years, and then a completed project in the spring of 2026. So, what this means is that safe harbor wouldn't be regained from Waterfield until the lease is signed, and we estimate that to be 2023, 2024 timeframe. So, it was lost, it will be regained, and of note, it will take about nine waterfield-sized projects to get to the planned 10% affordable housing units. So, there's a long way to go, but, of course, we're learning from the process, and this is where we are today. And so, one exercise that was helpful to the Finance Committee is just looking at other options. So, on the far left, you have the revised Civicco proposal. As we see, the revenues to the town are increased, there's 67% affordable housing units, there's 71 public parking spaces. The only negative is that it tries to optimize everything, and you don't get the highest financial price, but you get other things that balance it. A new RFP, we discussed, it would allow confirmation of the best deal, but it may extend the project timeline, although the MBTA is already pushing it out a bit. It may also sour the town's relations in the developer community. The other solution would be a 75% market, 25% affordable solution. This has been modeled by FinCom to be a higher financial return to the town through market rents, real estate taxes. However, it does reduce the number of affordable housing units to 25%, and we've been told that some developers dislike this option because the subsidies that Chris told us about are reduced, and that makes it more challenging to initially fund the project. Marty Jones, very helpful, she's also explained to FinCom that the expectations on the return of investments for the 75-25 split are higher than if it's more affordable. The fourth option that we discussed is, okay, well, the town could sell it. Why bother leasing? More of a Washington-Swanton Street approach. The benefits there, a higher potential upfront value to the town. A 2020 appraisal was around $3.4 million, I believe, so you would get that upfront rather than the 1.5. However, it does require higher returns to investors, it's not guaranteed, and I put these two items in gray, or in black.
Dr. Blackwell, you've extended your five minutes. Do you need more time?
One minute, Madam Moderator.
Any objections? Please proceed.
Thank you. So, there's a perceived loss of control over the space and a perceived loss of parking on-site, but we have seen from Washington and Swanton, those details can be added until, into the deed. So, that's whites and black. And then if there's only market, if there are market-only units, again, higher revenues to the town. However, the downside is the direction from town meeting is to use Waterfield for affordable housing. So, in summary, the Finance Committee voted 8 to 3 in favor of Article 2, the option that increases revenue and parking for the town. Those who voted against it were more in favor of rebidding the RFP and pursuing a more 75-25% approach. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Blackwell. Further on the question, we have the Chair of the Planning Board, Deidre Gerius.
At the Plannings Board's meeting this past Tuesday, we've ordered 4-0 with one abstention by our newest member, who didn't feel they had enough information to make a decision, to recommend favorable action on Article 2. The Board feels that the proposed development is consistent with the town's master plan, the Center Business District rezoning, and the Housing Production Plan. It reaffirms our community's support for affordable housing, providing 40 deed restricted units and advancing us towards our statutory obligations. It will set the bar for sustainable design and operation with onsite energy generation via solar panels, an all-electric building, and state-of-the-art passive house construction. It is the epitome of transit-oriented housing, being literally just steps away from the Town Center T station. It will add to the economic and cultural vitality of the Town Center by bringing 60 new households into the heart of town. And this particular design, the revision, provides a deeper level of affordability than the original proposal, making housing available to members of our community whose needs have not been served by market-rate housing. It retains almost all of the existing parking spaces, public spaces, while still providing a flexible, programmable space for shared community use. And it maintains the scale of the existing facade along Waterfield, as well as the existing open relationship with the Town Common. The proposal before you this evening is a compromise, mediating between our community's need for affordable housing, the complexities of financing affordable housing, and the desires to maintain our Town Center businesses and to ensure a positive financial outcome for the town. As with any compromise, no party will feel entirely satisfied with the outcome. The plan before the town, however, the town meeting tonight, is a pragmatic reworking of the original proposal, which maintains its best parts and successfully addresses our community's concerns. The Planning Board recommends Town Meeting members vote yes on Article 2. Thank you.
Thank you. I would be amiss to note that Ms. Allison is helping us out this evening. Matthew Griffin, our IT Director, is out today, so Sam has been gracious to help with all of the PowerPoints for this evening. Thanks, Sam. Next up, we are going to be moving to the Housing Partnership Board. On behalf of them will be their Chair, John Serbeer. As the Housing Partnership Board and Affordable Housing Trust will be speaking, I thought it would be a good time, as the PowerPoint gets brought up, to just give you a background. So, the Housing Partnership Board recommends overall strategies and specific proposals for the development of affordable housing and applications for an allocation of federal and state housing development subsidies and grants, and it reviews and makes recommendations on inclusion of affordable housing and proposals for privately-financed multi-unit developments. It was created in 1987 by this body. There are 13 members, six of them hold no other town office and are appointed by the moderator. The other seven individuals are from the following boards and committees. They have a member from the Select Board, Conservation Commission, Council on Aging, Housing Authority, Planning Board, Disability Access Commission, and the School Committee. On behalf of the Housing Partnership Board, Mr. Serbeer.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Town Meeting members. My name is John Serbeer. I'm Chair of Winchester's Housing Partnership Board. The Housing Partnership Board unanimously supports the results of the negotiations between the Select Board and Civicco for development of the Town Center's Waterfield parcel, and we urge a yes vote for approval of the associated land development agreement and a subsequent lease. As most of you know, but perhaps not all of you know, the Housing Partnership Board was established by Town Meeting for the purpose of advising Town Meeting and other Town Boards regarding specific ways to broaden the range of housing that meet the needs of low, moderate, and middle-income households and individuals of all ages. That is the spirit that we have participated in all of the activities over the last several years involving the Waterfield project. The reasons we are recommending approval of this warrant article are described in the handout that was on the table that hopefully you picked up on your way in, and I want to just mention a few of these. The housing that's being provided will meet the needs of seniors, thereby enabling them to continue to live in town after they no longer to wish to own a home. This housing also is suitable for younger adults, thereby enabling Winchester to become more of an intergenerational community. The housing also will be accessible for persons with disabilities. As we've heard, 40 of 60 residential units will be reserved for households earning between approximately $30,000 and $65,000 per year, with the remaining 20 units being market-rate units. Households in this low-to-moderate income range are underserved in the current Winchester housing market, and so this will help solve that. The housing will be rental rather than condominium ownership and consists of a mix of studio, one, and two, and three-bedroom units. Winchester's current percentage of rental housing is lower than in neighboring and comparable communities. Many households intentionally choose to rent rather than to own. Others cannot yet afford to own a home, and so this, again, will help with that. Importantly, the residents living here will make purchases at stores and restaurants located in Winchester's Town Center, thereby benefiting the business community. And so, I think it's very important that this will help in the vitality of the Town In addition to providing parking for residents, Civicco has agreed to provide 71 parking spaces for the public that can be used by visitors to the Town Center and by owners and employees of Town Center businesses. That's how this lot is now being used. Finally, the proposed development is consistent, as you've heard, with the Central Business District zoning that was adopted by 92% vote of Town Meeting. The proposal is also consistent with the spring 2018 Town Meeting vote, Winchester's master plan, Housing Production Plan, and this will help maintain safe harbor, as you've Finally, the proposed development is consistent with Winchester's climate change action plan. It will be designed to what's known as a passive house sustainability standard and thereby serving as a pilot for what can be done with other town projects. In conclusion, the additional negotiations conducted by the Select Board achieve the parking, financial, and housing goals recommended by the Waterfield Task Force. The result is a project that addresses a number of important town needs. It's time to move forward. Vote yes to approve. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Serbeer. Further on the question, Mr. Chris Galetta spoke on behalf of the Select Board, as requested by the Select Board, to discuss their pro forma. Ms. Marty Jones of the Affordable Housing Trust Committee was set to speak this evening. Unfortunately, she's unable to join us, and in response, as is very unusual, but Mr. Galetta will now be speaking on behalf of the Affordable Housing Trust Committee as a member of the trust.
households. We spent a lot of time studying this project and are excited to have supported it, nothing in our role as trustees, and hope that Town Meeting sees fit to move forward with the project. This project is a great use of the site and goes a long way towards diversifying the affordable housing stock within the Town of Winchester and helps us to make progress towards the ten percent affordable housing goal. Just visually, if you look down at the bottom of the chart here, on the left, you see the current stock of affordable housing as categorized by the state, and you'll note the sixty percent AMI component has ten units of that inventory currently in town. This project will move that number up significantly, serving a very important component of the Town of Winchester. Again, to reiterate, that sixty percent AMI threshold is a cap of sixty-seven thousand dollars for a two-person household or eighty-four thousand dollars for a four-person household. It's important to note that the private market does not, and we don't see it in the foreseeable future, create housing that meets the economic needs of that constituency. All of the sixty percent or below AMI housing inventory in town was created with direct Town involvement. Finally, the Affordable Housing Trust is making a significant financial commitment to back our support of the project, the five-hundred-thousand-dollar loan that we talked about earlier today. We support this project, strongly see it as the outcome of a competitive bidding process and a very healthy debate in town that's really forged a compromise across a number of issues, and we urge your support. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, seeing no other board or committee rise, members of Town Meeting, you may make your way to the microphone stands. When I recognize you to speak, please state your legal name and how you'd like to be identified and the precinct that you represent. This information is needed for the record of the meeting, and I ask that I be identified as Madam Moderator. Mr. Conti, can you please join the mic first?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. First, I want to thank you for your very kind and generous and somewhat undeserved kind words, and my fellow Town Meeting members for the recognition that you showed me. I'm really humbled and enjoyed every minute of the thirty-three years here. My rules for public speaking are to stand up and be recognized, speak up and be heard, and sit down and be appreciated. And so I'll be very brief. No private landowner or agent for a landowner seeking to get the best deal for his property would confine, limit himself to dealing with one developer, especially one developer who knows that you have no alternative and that you're desperate to sell the property, and neither should the Town of Winchester. So for that reason, I ask that you vote no on this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conti. Mr. Maganaro?
Thank you, Madam Moderator and Town Meeting Members. Madam Moderator, could I ask for an extra fifteen minutes to make my presentation? Nah, I'm only kidding. This is for Michael.
It's up to them.
I don't have the attention span for that. Good evening. My name is Paul Maganaro. I'm a Precinct Six member. While considering all the different viewpoints tonight, I respectfully ask you to keep this one simple question in mind, and that is, is a democracy, in a democracy, is it the expectation of the residents, we were elected to serve, that we honor the winner of a fair and public townwide vote? I say we have an obligation to, whether you agree with the outcome or not, because if we do not, then we really don't live in a true democracy. Unfortunately, the current state of affairs in America is for the losing side to challenge the outcome of elections and to use any means necessary to change the will of the people. Let's not let that happen to us. We are only one hundred and ninety-two residents representing over twenty thousand. Now into my observations regarding tonight's article. I would like to start off by acknowledging the great efforts and time that my friends, Select Board Mike Bentecourt, Rich Muji, Acting Town Manager Beth Rudolph, and Assistant Town Manager Mark Too Good have contributed towards working on a better Waterfield deal since last June, when the original deal between the Town and Civicco was rejected by two thousand six hundred and eighty-one registered Winchester voters. The progress made proves that those that stood up and voted against the original details of the project, not the project itself, as many would like you to believe, were correct, and there is a better deal for the community out there. I'm also happy to see that our current leadership has respected the concerns of the June no voters and have made revenue a major criteria on future projects such as the Washington Street Project. True, this is progress. While the progress they have made in gaining a few of the critical parking spots back and the increased revenue for the town is appreciated, I feel, as many others do, that the intent of the voters' rejection of the deal was not adhered to. The voters, as well as Waterfield Task Force members, Mr. Bill Cummings for the Cummings Foundation, and Mr. Patrick Fortin of the Chamberlain, and myself, believe the only way to ensure the residents the best deal was to redo the RFP with revenue, affordable housing, and parking as the main criteria. The reason provided on why this request was not considered is stated by Mr. Muji's letter, in Mr. Muji's letter dated May nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, to Town Meeting members. He starts by saying, quote, "Chasing the unknown is not an appealing option," end quote. The Select Board feared that developers, who have heard it here tonight, would not bid the project. I suggest we should not govern out of fear, rather, we should govern with respect to the voters' desires and from a point of strength that tells all that we do business with, that the financial well-being of the town is a priority. A new RFP that encourages bidders to meet the state-approved twenty-five percent affordable units for safe harbor instead of providing incentive to bidders that offer the most affordable units would be in the best interest of the town because it would meet safe harbor and also would generate the most income for our town. We face major needs in town that would require a lot of revenue, such as a new Lynch in Morocco. How much financial pressure will and can our residents take? Life, as with politics, must include respect for all and compromise. Sadly, of late, we have not had a lot of that in our town. There are too many groups, men who are digging their heels in for one or more special agendas. We say, we see way too much rhetoric and noise on Facebook and other social media that is divisive and fuels anger. We even have individuals lead campaigns and encourage people not to vote for, instead of who to vote for. We need to lobby for our beliefs, but at the same time, we should do so in a respectful manner while encouraging others to get involved. We live in a democracy. I have taken the time since last June to meet and have had many productive conversations with individuals that share different beliefs than me on many matters, such as Pam Court, Hadi Delio, Susan Verdicchio, and even Mike Bentecourt, and Fred Yano of the Farmers Market. I'm pleased to say that we learned that we have a lot more in common than not, and we will continue to work together to try and bring a level of respect back to our community, because if we don't, then the community and the faith of those who we are here to represent will suffer. As elected body, we must lead by example. I'm not going to ask you to vote one way or another. I will only ask you to vote your conscience, and before you do, ask yourself the question I opened with. In a democracy, is it the expectation of the residents, we were elected to serve, that we honor the winner of a fair and public townwide vote? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maganaro. Further on the question?
Thank you. Stephanie Zaramba, Precinct Two. I was also one of the five members who were able to serve on that task force last fall and make recommendations that were intended to bridge what was a divide in our community. So I'll ask a few other things to keep in mind. The referendum vote last year in June did have a winner, but it was very close. It was by a difference of sixty-seven votes. And so what I understood the Select Board to have taken from that election is that they had one clear charge in an almost equally divided town, which was to create compromise. And I think that that's exactly what they sought to do when they created the task force. They were looking for where five folks on various sides of the issue could find common ground, and we did. We found a lot of common ground. Of our unanimous recommendations, as you heard, the Select Board considered all of them and adopted all but two, and had reasonable explanations for why they weren't going to adopt those last two. I don't believe that the Select Board was looking to know where we would fall, three to two, because that was just reinforcing what the divisive issues were. They were looking to see where the five of us all agreed. This proposal, I believe, strikes a good compromise based on the common ground we did find. The objective has always been affordable housing at Waterfield. That was the Select Board's objective. That's what this body had previously approved. And I think that within those confines, we should actually be very proud of the proposal before us. It does a wonderful job pulling together a lot of very diverse perspectives. This deal was never intended primarily to be a moneymaker. It was not intended to pay for future school rebuilds. It's intended to make much-needed progress against our affordable housing goals, and it does. I do want to note, it is important to point out that the task force did not recommend a new RFP, as some people have said. Again, three of five did, and I wanted to share why I voted against that. First, I didn't believe it would create a significantly different outcome. We had an open, very transparent, competitive bidding process. It's similar to when you buy a house, right? You get all your offers, but then you pick one, and you enter into a purchase and sale with one. That is, you know, a normal competitive process. The task force was also unanimous notably that we wanted to keep the ratios and the level of affordability in the proposal the same. And so given that constraint, based on my own research, based on what we heard from the independent expert that the Town hired for this, I think these financial terms, it's basically as favorable as it gets if you want to keep all of the affordability the same. Also, we were told by Town Council and our independent consultant that a new RFP did present potential legal and reputational risk. I trust that the Select Board very much weighed the option of issuing a new RFP, that they engaged the right experts, and that they decided not to. If it was the right course, I believe they would have done that, and I think we need to put some trust in them there. Lastly, the Town is not a public company, right? We're not operating to maximize revenue for shareholder return. We also aren't doing this just because of state requirements or a safe harbor. We are in Massachusetts, one of the wealthiest towns by median household income. We have some of the best schools in the state. We also have some of the highest median home values in the whole state. So this is about our community, right? This is about our collective values and priorities, and it's about making our wonderful town a little bit more accessible. I think that's what we do here with this proposal. So I'll just say, the time is now. If we don't pass this tonight, I don't think we'll ever see affordable housing at Waterfield, and I really worry about what that means for our ability to attract high-quality developers in the future. It's been validated by resident experts on affordable housing. Our independent consultant has said this is a really good deal. Select Board says vote yes. Bendcom votes to say yes. Planning Board, you're hearing from all these boards. And lastly, I keep hearing everyone say, I support affordable housing, and if that is as almost universally true as it seems, let's do this now. Let's move forward together as a united community and get this done. Thank you.
Thank you. Town Meeting Members, please stop applauding in between every speaker. We've got a lot in line here. The other thing to remind you all of, you are in an acoustical space. I can hear your conversations. Please stop. Please proceed.
Yes, Madam Moderator, John Dovens, Precinct Five. I stand in opposition. I want to address the Town Meeting through you.
Please go ahead.
Good evening, Town Meeting. I support affordable housing in Winchester, but this is the wrong development in the wrong place at the wrong time. We do not need a Parkview-style development hovering over our historic downtown and common. For those Town Meeting Members with more than an ideological interest in this project who want to analyze this project from a rational, fact-based standpoint, let me make my case. To begin, let's review why this lost in the townwide referendum one year ago. Of the many concerns shared by residents and local businesses, one of the most pressing issues was location, specifically proximity to downtown shops and restaurants. Moreover, in addition to parking, other major concern was return on investment to the town and vis a vis the sale price and the market value. What's changed? Not the developer. Civicco stands to gain in getting below-market value for the land, given the dramatic increase in real estate values locally amid decades-high inflation. I read just today it was up to twenty-five percent. Not the Town's return on investment in light of the same inflation and the new value of the land a year later, and not the concerns about parking and traffic. And just so no one can accuse me of not being fair, I can see there have been some modifications to the original layout. So where are we now? We have two forty-B projects underway on Cambridge and River Street. Another is in the pipeline for the corner of Washington and Swanton. The Waterfield Lot is the most valuable parcel of scarce land that this town owns. We have serious financial challenges ahead of us: school rebuilds, soaring inflation, spiraling supply chain costs, and an increasing probability of recession. All of this against the backdrop of two looming overrides in twenty-four and twenty-five. What a way to greet our new residents. Considering these factors, I'm asking you to take a reasoned, sensible approach, rather than an emotional one, in assessing this flawed development, which the Town voted down last June and many local businesses do not support. Winchester is making progress on affordable housing, as evidenced by the projects underway and planned. We do not need to further jeopardize our town's financial future with a project that will only enrich a developer, a project the voters rejected. Let's say no to Parkview Two downtown, and I urge you to vote against this article. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Further on the question?
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Timothy Matthews, Precinct One. I rise to support wholeheartedly this substantially reworked version of the Waterfield project and to speak in support of the idea that Winchester desperately needs more affordable housing built as soon as possible, both as a matter of compliance with state law and because it's both the equitable and fair thing to do. In two thousand and nineteen, even before the COVID pandemic began, the Federal Reserve Bank of Boston reported on the region's affordability crisis as follows, quote, "High housing costs in Massachusetts place significant financial pressure on the state's residents, and a lack of affordable housing can decrease our region's competitiveness. Affordability is of special concern for the state's extremely low-income renter households. In two thousand and sixteen, seventy-nine percent of those households were rent-burdened. Due to high housing costs, these households often have to forego spending on health care, food, childcare, or other necessities. A single financial shock can cause this group to fall behind on rent, leading to eviction or even homelessness." And so the report examining existing shortages of affordable rental housing for these households at both the state and local levels. And back in two thousand and sixteen, there was less than one affordable unit for every two of these extremely low-income households in Massachusetts. Cities and towns vary widely in their supply of affordable units, with much of the subsidized housing concentrated in major cities and other heavily populated areas. Communities with lower rents were associated with lower, higher rates of rent burden, which suggests that, in some cases, low-income individuals share the blame for the high rate of rent burden that others experience. Separately, in a WGBH article in April of this year, it was noted that, quote, "Gentrification is having a devastating impact on the local housing market, leading many people of color to head out of the city," that is, Boston, "and to settle in more far-flung, affordable locations." I think we can all agree that maintaining our town's and region's robust economic health and continuing to build a better future for our children is a top priority. To maintain that prized position as a dynamic and growing community, we, as a town, need to join with our fellow communities around Boston to address this crisis, also because it's in our best interest economically. In a recent report on affordable housing, the Boston Foundation said, quote, "The Massachusetts- In a recent report on affordable housing, the Boston Foundation said, quote, "The Massachusetts Housing Partnership estimates that Greater Boston is about 38,000 housing units short of what we need today, a gap that will grow to 90,000 in the next decade if we don't step up production meaningfully." To some extent, this is continuing the quote, "It's a problem created by something we all prize, ten years of economic growth in Boston. In the past decade, our metro area produced 275,000 new jobs, but only 108,000 new homes. Add to our region's high construction costs and decades of restricted zoning, we've inhibited housing production, and it's clear that we have therefore built a dynamic economy on an unstable housing platform." So, our local question remains, if we don't move forward now, after this long period of listening and revising, when will we? If not this lot, this project, this time, this configuration, what will it take? As Mr. Betancourt laid out in his presentation earlier, this process has now stretched over years, responding to an ever-growing list of concerns primarily around process and what-ifs. We cannot let ever-further unfounded concerns prevail, because we as a town have an ethical and a moral imperative to do the right thing. As the Boston Foundation says at the end of their issue paper on affordable housing that I quoted above, "We all need to get more involved locally to advocate for the equitable solutions that will continue to make the Boston area a desirable place to live." As residents, we should know whether our city or town is meaningfully permitting housing, preserving or creating affordability, or adding to the diversity of our housing stock. And what they said was, if your community is not, the ball is in your court to advocate for more housing, more diverse housing, and more affordable housing. That's part of why I ran for election and am here as a town meeting, and I ask you to vote in support of this article. Thank you.
Thank you. There are two members of our community who have reached out to me to ask to speak on the matter before us. It is a longstanding tradition of our meeting to recognize our community members who would like to address the meeting, although it does require your vote. So I'd like to ask those who are in favor of allowing two non-town meeting members to join the queue, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. To the two members who spoke to me, you know who you are, please join the queues. Further on the question?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I am Tom Howley. I am a town meeting member from Precinct 3, and I'm also a town center resident. Nancy and I live about a block from the Waterfield lot. We will see the proposed building if in fact it gets built. Others are speaking to the improved aspects of the proposal that's before us, but I want to talk about something else. I'm the chair of the Winchester Council on Aging, and the mission of the Council on Aging is to promote the healthy aging, independence, engagement, and the well-being of Winchester's older residents and the community that supports them. Among the greatest challenges that many older Winchester residents face are the need for more social engagement with people of all ages, the need for more accessible public transportation, and the need to somehow address the economic insecurity that grows, that can grow as incomes become fixed and costs increase. This is a very stressful and life-changing situation, which for many older Winchester residents is primarily caused by the housing costs they can no longer afford. The Warren article we are being asked to authorize this evening has the potential benefit for Winchester's older residents in each of these three areas so critical to their well-being. And although the proposed project will not in and of itself resolve these issues, it will help. While it does not provide preference for older residents, it will make available a housing option that will allow some to reduce their housing costs in Winchester and to stay here, and to do so by living in the heart of our community, next door to public transportation, within easy walking distance of not only our retail stores and restaurants, but also the library, the town common, and other town services. Importantly, for many older residents, they will be given the opportunity for meaningful daily engagement with people of all ages. Every so often, truly significant decisions are presented to town meeting that shape our community and tell us who we are. I can think of a number of such decisions that for me stand out. Committing to the decades-long flood mitigation program, the public-private rebuilding of Manchester Field, the acquisition of Wrightlock Farm, the investments we have made in the quality of our school system, including the decision to build this new high school. Each of these decisions were difficult. Each, like the question before us, was approached thoughtfully, and with many years of analysis, much discussion, and refinement, each required that we be stewards of our financial resources and our values as a community. I believe the decisions of those prior town meetings were consistent with our tradition of fiscal responsibility and strengthened us as a caring and connected community. Each was an investment for current and future generations. I believe we do the same by approving the Warren article that's now before us. We have a unique opportunity to use a town asset to leverage the creation of a significant number of affordable rental units in the location that will have the most benefit for residents of all ages, as well as our town center merchants. The Council on Aging Advisory Board voted unanimously to support the initial Civicco proposal. And although we have not had an opportunity to meet to consider the improved project before us this evening, creating more affordable housing options is central to improving the economic security of Winchester's older residents, and I'm confident that the Council on Aging would again vote unanimously to support the proposal we now consider. I think this is now our moment. Further delay will not improve the project, it will kill it, and the significant affordable housing opportunities that it provides for us. I urge town meeting, after years of planning, analysis, consideration, financial return, parking, mix of affordable units, design, and environmental improvements, I urge us to vote yes on the article before us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Further on the question?
Good evening, Madam Moderator. Steve Boxansky, Precinct 4. Good evening, everybody. Through you to the members. I'm rising tonight just to make a few observations and to ask everyone just to really think about this, as if you haven't done enough of that already. But this is a really big deal. This is in the heart of our downtown, and no matter what we do, whether it's this project or another one, it's going to dramatically change that downtown. And that's okay. That's okay. It may change for the better, but there also may be some unintended consequences that we're not quite sure of. And so, when I look at this project, there's a lot of good things about it. There's a lot of pros. There really are. But there's also some financial questions that I just can't get over. And so, I'm torn on this. My gut tells me we can do better. I hate to be the skunk at the party. I know a lot of time's been put into this project, a lot of work, a lot of years. So I'm not trying to disrespect any of that work. I just wish we went back and rebid the project. The last year when we voted on this, it won by a slim margin. And then we had the referendum, which was a no by a slim margin. So that tells me we are a community that's really split on this project. I don't see this project having 60, 70, 80% approval, and I wish it could. And I believe it could. I really do. I don't know why we can't have a project that enjoys much greater support when we all agree that we should have more affordable housing in town. And the only thing holding me back is, again, some of these financial questions that nag at me. I've seen some other proposals that showed a higher income stream for the town. Why did we not choose that? So it's a big deal. Change is going to happen. We don't know exactly what the change is, and we don't know that we're not going to get another bid. I just heard somebody say, if we don't do it now, we're never going to get another bid. I don't believe that, and you shouldn't either. We can build affordable housing at that lot. This is not a question. I'm not here to say we shouldn't do it. I just wish we had a better project that was going to provide more for the town in the long term. It's a big deal, and anything this big of a deal in life, when you have these big decisions, do you make them when it's a split field? No, you want more consensus. You want more unity. At least I do. And I wish we had that on this project. I really do. So I'm going to ask everyone just to vote their conscience. Again, you know where I stand. I'm trying to get there, but again, that some of these financial questions are just nagging me and pulling me back. So I thank you for the opportunity, Madam Moderator, and good luck to us all.
Thank you. Further on the question?
Madam Moderator, town meeting members, I'm Lance Grendzbeck. I represent Precinct 3. Perspective. We've been debating reuse of the Waterfield lot for more than 12 years, starting with a series of community conversations in 2009 about how to revitalize the town center. During that time, we've been discussing and debating four key questions. First, how do we add housing to keep up with population growth? The Boston regional economy is growing. Jobs bring people. Winchester's population has increased by 15% since 2000. When we asked people where to add more housing, people said quite clearly, put housing in the town center, not in the neighborhoods. Waterfield does that. Second, how do we revitalize the center business district? Some said, build a parking garage on the Waterfield lot. But a 200-car parking garage costs almost as much as an elementary school. And the retail economists told us, quite correctly, that the biggest problem for our town center was not parking, it was spelled "Amazon," and how you adjust to a change in a retail environment. But they told us that building housing in the center would bring customers to the center, put customers in the center, put customers in the shop. Waterfield does that. Third question, how do we meet the state's Chapter 40B mandate for affordable housing? Remember, Chapter 40B allows up to 300 units anywhere. The developer can buy enough land. But people said no to 300-unit developments. We've seen a series of them proposed. They said, keep the development small, 40, 50, 60 units. Waterfield does that. Finally, fourth, how do we generate revenue for the town? Some said, build luxury condos on the Waterfield. But the developers, over those 12 or more years, have consistently told us they weren't much interested. They see a small site next to a very noisy rail line and sprawling spanning over a very large 48-inch MWRA regional sewer line, not so attractive a site. They also told us that if they want to build luxury apartments there, they want all the parking spaces for their tenants. Forget merchants parking, forget employee parking, forget commuter parking, forget shopper parking. Okay? The town needs a source of stable, long-term revenue. More than we're getting out of the current parking lot, Waterfield provides that. The proposed development gets us housing, parking, and revenue. Another 12 years of debate and a great deal more of well-intentioned but wishful thinking is unlikely to produce a better result. It's time, after 12 years of debate, to approve Article 2 and to move on. Madam Moderator, thank you.
Thank you. Further on the question?
Hi, my name is Somiya Ganapati. I'm town meeting member from Precinct 2. I had the privilege of being on the Waterfield Task Force as well, and I felt that the town referendum was pretty divided, but as task force members, we actually had a lot in common. We found common ground on the number of affordable housing units we wanted. We had recommendations on parking, on improving revenue to the town. So I truly feel that the new proposal did take a lot of our considerations into the new proposal. I was one of the two town meeting members that voted against new RFP, because I didn't really feel that we would get a better deal, and also was concerned about a reputational risk to the town if we were, as a town, we'd be considered difficult to work with, and we would also have a better chance of negotiating with Civicco. So I really hope that you support this article. Thank you.
Thank you. Further on the question?
Madam Moderator, I'm Dorothy Symboli from Precinct 6. I'd like to address town meeting through you. Please proceed. Thank you.
Ms. Allison, could you help her with her slides?
Yes. I only need to put some of the down. I use one of yours. Which one's yours? I don't see it on there. I don't have any slides, Madam Moderator.
All right, one moment.
I have a book. I can. Should we? Can I have a drive? You can take it from here to DS Waterfield. DS. Oh, thank you. Yep, okay. Got it? That's just that, start with that one. And then how do I get to the second? Just arrow over right here. Okay. Arrow over right here. Okay. Yeah. Oh, so how do I get that up? There we go. There you go. Okay. So.
Thank you, Mary Ellen.
We've heard a lot about local preference. We've heard a lot about this development going to be accessible for our seniors, for our existing families, you know, possibly families that have hit hard times, a single parent whose kids are in Winchester public schools, that want to stay in Winchester public schools. I mean, these are all really important issues. And so, I did a little bit of research to figure out what local preference is about. I really wish that Marty Jones was here, because I had asked her this question last fall during the task force presentation. I had said, is there local preference on this project? And I was told at the time that that would be a developer determination, and that the developer had not yet decided which program it was going to pursue with the state, and whether or not this project would be eligible for local preference. As far as I am aware, that decision has not been made. So, per law, for some 40B projects, 70% of the affordable units can be set aside for local preference. And you can see up here the categories. Current residents, including our elderly, municipal employees, local business employees, and households with children already in Winchester public schools. So who decides how local preference, if local preference applies to a project? Well, it's the state, it's the developer, it's us, town meeting. And again, as I pointed out, this depends on which state program Civicco chooses. So my concern is that if we pass this project today, we will lose leverage to tell the developer, yes, we want 70% of those units set aside for our residents, for our employees, for our municipal employees. Once we pass this, we've lost that leverage. We could have 0%. There are two housing, affordable housing projects in Sudbury. They are 0%. There is pressure on the city of Newton right now to lower their local preference from 70% down to 0%. So this is not a guarantee. So I just want you to ask yourself, how will you feel after this is built if our seniors are denied the opportunity to join the lottery for this project? How are you going to feel if our, if a child in a Winchester public school, that family is denied the opportunity to be in the lottery to live in Waterfield? I think it's too much of a risk. I think somebody needs to step to the plate and give us some assurances, and it should be worked into the LDA, and it's not. Dr. Blackwell pointed out that there is a time gap while the MBTA- Dr. Blackwell pointed out that there is a time gap while the MBTA waits to complete its work. We have time. We can pause. This deal was limited at the outset because of the original RFQ process. We were told that this was the best deal. Look what happened. The referendum happened, they went back to the drawing board, they found a better deal. Is it the best deal? No. There was money left on the table then, and there is still money being left on the table. And if we are making that sacrifice, if we are willing to compromise and say, okay, we're not taking the best financial deal for this town, we at least need to assure that our local, our local residents, our seniors, our families are given a preference to live in this project. Thank you very much.
Ms. Symboli, did you have a question there for the developer?
I have a list of questions. How much time do you have?
Did you have a, about preference? Was your question about preference for local preference?
Yes, it is. It is about local preference. So these are the questions that I put together. If somebody wanted to address that, I would be happy to have them answer those.
Is the developer, would this select board like to answer local preference or have the developer answer it?
Hi, everyone.
Mr. Moochi, Chair of the Select Board. Go ahead, Mr. Moochi.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Thank you, Dorothy, for your questions. At this time, I would like to introduce Andrew Consigli. Andrew, if you want to stand up. Andrew is the Principal of Civicco. He is also the architect, the designer, you know, of the project, and he can answer these questions. So thanks, Andrew, for stepping up.
So to the developer, could you please answer the question if you plan to apply for local preference?
Yes, hi. It is something that the town does and requests. It is not the developer. So once the project, the DHCD understands that there's a project, the town requests for a local preference at, like, for example, 70%. This is a very similar process that we went through with a project in the town of Lincoln. A project called Oral Landing, and the town, essentially with our support, went into the DHCD and requested a local preference. And typically, I don't want to speak for the DHCD or anyone else, but typically it is as long as the town shows there's a need for it. So I assume that it would be favorable.
Thank you. To the Select Board, are you able to answer if you plan to request 70% local preference?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. We absolutely will pursue 70%, and we've spoken with the developer, and they will work with us to make that happen. So I, I think, as I mentioned before, and, you know, you don't want to say what DHCD is going to do, but they know that we have affordable housing problem here, and so we can make that argument to them. We can show them our numbers, our long waiting lists, and we can show them that there is a local need here, and we can pursue that local preference very aggressively. As Andrew was saying, their Lincoln project, they just got 70%, and it's, you know, in this region is starting to be something that happens quite a bit more frequently than maybe it used to. So we will definitely pursue it.
Thank you. Moving on. Further on the question? One of our community members.
Thank you, Madam Moderator and members of the Town Meeting. I appreciate it. And my name is Arya Ramachandran, and I'm a co-founder of the Students for Affordable Housing Coalition in Winchester. So we, as I'm sure you can tell by our title, have a mission to do what we can as students, advocate for affordable housing and hopefully aid the process by giving a student's perspective on the issue. And that's what I continue, plan on continuing to do. Now, today, there have been a lot of talks about why affordable housing is necessary and some mentions about why it's not the right answer. There have also been practical mentions about how affordable housing can be instituted to make sure that everyone is at least somewhat happy. I mean, that's what this entire thing is all about. But I don't want to talk about specific details and delve into the numbers too much because, quite frankly, I don't think a student is going to be the messenger for those things. Whether we want to believe it or not, I think we would appreciate hearing those things from an adult. So instead, what I want to do is discuss affordable housing in the Waterfield project from a more ethical point of view. I have been blessed with the fortune of Winchester education without really any economic burdens bringing me down. I live in an amazing neighborhood, which is, fun fact, right down the street from Mr. Betancourt, and I enjoy the rewards of going to Winchester High School from most Mondays through Fridays. But of course, this is not the case for everyone. At the same time, though, it can be. We have the opportunity to provide that same amazing experience and education to so many more people, but we're choosing not to do so, oftentimes at least. And what I find even more concerning is that we still won't do it despite the fact that we're technically breaking a law if we don't. 40B states that 10% of our housing needs to be affordable, and neighboring towns that we like to compare ourselves to, like Lexington, are above this percentage with 11.05% being affordable. Winchester isn't even close, but below 5% of the housing being affordable. Now, the reason we, as a town, give to reject a proposal of affordable housing is often, quote-unquote, "it's not the right deal." But what we have to realize is that the perfect deal might never come along, and we shouldn't let the perfect be the enemy of the good. By not allowing for affordable housing, we're gatekeeping and preventing other students who aren't as fortunate as I am from gaining learning opportunities. We're contributing to the limiting of future generations. Simply put, and I'm going to be honest here, there's no doubt that affordable housing is going to lose the town some money, and chances are you're never going to receive that deal where it's going to be fiscally beneficial for a town to implement affordable housing, at least not completely fiscally beneficial. That said, eventually, we do have to do it. Sometimes it's necessary to propel forward and implement change regardless of the loss it might immediately bring because it's the right thing to do. And I hope that the town of Winchester soon realizes that this is the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Another community member, please. Join us.
Good evening. My name is Arti Benis, and for those of you who do not know me, I have owned a small business in Winchester Center for 45 years. I would like to thank you, Madam Moderator, and Town Meeting members for allowing me to speak. Wow. It's a lot of pressure following such eloquent speakers tonight. Tonight's vote is not against affordable housing. The Waterfield lot is zoned for affordable housing, and it'll always be affordable housing. I am here to speak as a member of the small business community. Winchester Center is always ranked as one of the top three assets of the town. Small business is the engine that keeps the center alive. Small businesses pay taxes to the town of Winchester in the form of property tax, real estate tax, and business certificates. These are the same small businesses that never say no when asked to contribute to town organizations, charities, schools, and places of worship. Unfortunately, all of these small businesses, whose owners do not live in Winchester, were not able to vote on the referendum affecting their ability to earn a living. Let me repeat that. The reason the referendum passed by what people say is a narrow margin is because dozens of Winchester businesses and their employees were simply not allowed to vote. Their voices were never heard. There is nothing more important to the survival of small business than adequate parking. We have, or we are about in the process of losing more than 120 downtown parking spaces to things like the train station, rebuild, the rebuilding of the train station, and safety changes, and this is all before the Waterfield development. In 2019, according to the Winchester Department of Engineering, there were 813 permits given up for employee parking, as well as an additional 64 permits for commuters. 813 parking permits for employees. The Waterfield lot was parking for a number of these commuters and employees during the day, and at night, the lot supported four restaurants by allowing parking for both employees and patrons. There are no provisions to replace any of these parking spots. Experience tells me that the employees will be forced to park on the street, move their cars after a couple of hours. This will only exacerbate the difficulty for shoppers to find parking in the center. It will make it very difficult for businesses to survive. The town has recently lost a suite of five offices in a Waterfield building because the owners knew their business would not survive without parking and have since moved out of, has moved out to office space out of town. Originally, the Civicco proposal had retail on the first floor. This has since been scrapped. I think it's because they know there's not enough parking to support retail. How many of us have driven around town three or four times looking for a place to park and then given up and gone elsewhere to do our shopping? More than one of my customers has told me they no longer drive to the local CVS because the one in Lubin has more adequate parking. We now have a number of residents working from home who have a small window of opportunity to drive downtown, run errands, and then get back to home to go to work. If they can't find quick parking to get their sub at Daghestinos or book at Bookends, they will go elsewhere and have gone elsewhere. Then there are some of us that tell people should be willing to walk. However, this is New England. We have months of inclement weather. Seniors, people with disabilities, parents with carriages and small childrens do not have time or the physical ability to walk on some of our treacherous sidewalks. Yes, I know the Civicco plan is proposing 71 public parking spaces. However, they are only allowing parking for 47 cars on 60 units. There are no accommodations whatsoever for visitor parking. I sincerely doubt that there will only be 47 cars for 60 units and, again, no adequate parking provisions for all these extra cars. Rich Moochi and the Select Board should be congratulated on the improvements of the Civicco plan, and I thank them for all the diligence and hard work. However, please ask yourself before you vote tonight, if Civicco can make this many changes in a few weeks, what would the other eight to 10 interested developers propose? The Task Force appointed by the Select Board voted in favor of terminating the Civicco negotiations and rebidding the project to be sure the town has the best option. Why would we want to rush this and risk leaving, leaving value on the table? Let me ask you. Is there anybody in this room that would plan a major home renovation and only get one estimate? In conclusion, I want to say a vote against this project is not a vote against affordable housing. It's a vote to protect small businesses and afford them the opportunity to pay their bills and feed their families. By voting no, we can revisit this plan and definitely get a better deal for both the town of Winchester and small business. Again, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. All right, we're going to hold the applause from here on forward because the rest is all Town Meeting members. Thank you to the last two speakers. They were our, our community members who asked to address you. Further back, returning back to all Town Meeting members. Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. My name is Seamus Brady, and I live in Precinct One. So first, just a piece of information for the body here. The school committee met this evening, and we did take action on this article. We voted 4-0 in favor. We had one member who was not present. Now, I want to tell you a little bit of a personal story. As some of you may know, I grew up one town over in Arlington. My mom was a single mom who had me at 22. Right now, there are single moms probably around 22 years old, and I can tell you with a lot of confidence that virtually none of them could ever afford to live in Winchester. There are not places available for them. Every day we delay a project like this, we are delaying people like that from living in our town. And if you're okay with that, that's fine. I get that. I understand that. I'm not okay with that. We have an opportunity to create more units of affordable housing. It is imperfect. Nothing is perfect. I ask you to think about that. We have an opportunity to create more units of affordable housing. It is before us. It is in our power to do. I hope that you'll make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to have Mr. Johnson speak, and then we're going to take a 15-minute break. On the reason we need to do that otherwise is that Precinct Seven, you need to return to the clerks and get your clickers checked. So Precinct Seven during the break, and the reason why I am going to have to break is to get Precinct Seven to return and get their, to get their clickers all verified before we can take any votes. So, Mr. Johnson?
Good evening, Madam Moderator, Select Board, Finance Committee, Town Meeting members. I rise here not to tell you this is a good project or a bad project because I'm not quite sure. What I am sure is I don't understand some of the language. Many places, specifically on the lease information on page 10, where they're talking gross revenue, then just below that, they talk net operating revenue, if any. I'm very confused about that because I think a net number means a lot less than a gross number. And I'm trying to figure this out, and it, I just can't do it without someone's help. When I'm looking at something, when I'm looking at a gross number, it's very simple. Whatever the rent is, that's the gross number. The net number is a lot different. It includes all types of expenses, most are justified, some are questionable. We actually do in our own enterprise accounts when we include town manager, controller expenses. They're a little bit beyond the normal scope of an expense, but they're allowable. My concern is the net operating revenue, if any, versus gross revenue, which we know is going to be there. I also have a couple of questions. It's great that we get some money when this property is either refinanced or sold, and it's pretty safe to assume this property is going to be sold over the life of 100 years several times. But all of a sudden, if someone else buys the property, they can redepreciate it. And as you know, in real estate, depreciation's a large factor. So my question is, how does, once the property is sold, affect a depreciated number, again, against the net revenue? My assumption is the revenue will go down to pay the higher interest rate based upon a higher value. I'd like the board to try to answer that for me and give me some direction. And I'd like to have a follow-up.
Mr. Johnson, could you repeat your question?
Yeah, sure. My next question is, we know, do we know what the expenses are today in determining the net revenue? And how are we going to know what the expenses are in the future, 25, 50, 75, 100 years out? And that's what concerns me. I would rather have a very simple formula. I know the rent number would be much lower, but I'd rather just have the net number. Even I could calculate that real quick. So given that, I'll keep talking to the Select Board.
To the Select Board, do you want to answer that question after the break? Okay. If it's acceptable to you, Mr. Johnson will break and they'll get that number for you. And follow-ups? Absolutely. Following that in line was Mr. Leo goes after Mr. Johnson and then Mr. Moochi. Town Meeting members, please enjoy your 15-minute break. Precinct Seven, please go see the Assistant Town Clerks that are outside and get your clickers verified. Thank you. Thank you.
He must have gone to the men's room. I have one.
Evening, everybody. Tonight is June 6th, 2022. You are watching our coverage of Winchester's special spring town meeting. Town meeting's dealing with one question tonight, and that is Article Two. Article One was definitely postponed. Article Two is to approve or disapprove a proposal, a LDA, Land Development Agreement, negotiated by the Select Board and a lease, 99-year lease on, on the Waterfield, Waterfield Lot downtown. A proposal to build 60 units, of which 40 would be affordable, affordable rentals. To some of the background, this initial agreement was approved by Town Meeting but overturned by a townwide referendum. The task force, task force was formed to renegotiate it. And essentially, this project, again, is 60 units, of which 40 are affordable. 85 parking spaces in the original agreement were increased to 119. The $1 million lease initial, initially has been increased to 1.5 million. It's a four-story building. 50% of the units are studio apartments, which was, said would be a less of an impact on the schools. And the rate paid by Civicco will go from 10% to 15% of revenues. Mike Bentoncourt from the Board of Select, the Select Board, rather, said the town would get about $5.7 million over 15 years in taxes and lease revenue. Value of parking would add about another $3 million and a very high percentage of local resident preference. We heard later on, the Select Board will be looking for 70% local preference, which is Winchester, current Winchester residents, employees of Winchester businesses, and families with students in Winchester schools. We got a presentation on the finances of the project. We heard from the Finance Committee. Finance Committee said there was a need to balance financial return, affordable housing, and other factors like parking and sustainability. The timeline would anticipate completion of this project in 2026 because it could not be built at the same time as the Winchester train station project, which is currently scheduled to be finished in 2024. It would take nine Waterfield-sized projects to get affordable, 10% affordable housing for the town. We also heard that rebidding would extend timeline and costs, but in the end, the Finance Committee voted eight to three in favor of this. So Town Meeting's in recess at the moment. We will be back with a wrap-up at the conclusion of the meeting. It looked like there were about three more people waiting in line to speak. So stay tuned for more coverage of this special town meeting and our wrap-up at the conclusion.
As I tell my children, don't make me ask you three times. So Town Meeting members, let's take a test of those clickers and make sure they are all operational. We are going to do a fun question.
Do you want to do a roll call?
Did you want, did you do, want to do both? All right, we need to do two types of questions. We're going to do roll call to test the clickers, and then we're going to do a fun question thereafter. So here comes the light. Get your clickers out. These are non-binding. These are just to check the clickers for the town clerk's purposes. Hit the green if you'd like to say you're present. Hit the red if you'd like to say you're not. And abstain means you really don't want to answer, but you're answering anyways. And when you press it, you see the Y. You will also see a box that says okay. Please make sure you look at your clicker and make sure you get the Y and the box that I love to see that so many of you came after we did our original vote. It was a wonderful turnout for this evening. Wonderful turnout for this town meeting. So we have 162. We're going to scroll through. Please look for your name and how you voted. Please raise a hand if you do not see yourself on the list.
Gentleman in the back?
Dr. Miller, did you choose not to vote?
I voted A.
That's fine. A is...
It didn't show.
It didn't show up.
But it said yes.
All right, so we have John Miller missing. Precinct six. Is that right?
Well, I voted A.
No, I'm just asking because of the clickers. How many people whose clickers aren't working, please rise up. Okay, we have Ruth Tramachi. Are you in Precinct six? Ruth, five. Dia? No, don't mess, don't, John, don't mess with me right now, okay? I'm a donkey on the edge, okay? This is real work here. We want this vote to be right, please, seriously. The gentleman in the blue shirt in the back, I don't know your name.
Mark Sandsky, Precinct four.
Steven, Precinct four, and navy blue shirt in front of him.
You're black.
Precinct five, say your name again.
Eric Gio.
Okay, can they, can they come down here so that when we do the test vote, I can see that?
Yeah, come on down then.
Please come join me.
Just line up here. All right, Drew, do you want to? How do you want to proceed?
Do the test vote.
All right, so we're doing our test vote. All right.
Go over there.
All right, now just stay, just stay right up here and we're going to do a test vote. We're going to see if it works.
She just told me to stand here. All right. Where do you want her to stand?
That's fine.
Do you want her to put the green light on?
All right, we're going to do the test vote and we're going to test these clickers. Will the Celtics win it all? If you hit green, you think they're going to take it? Red, no. Abstain, you're not interested in voting right now. Please do choose an option. And I am voting.
Did you register?
How about you other folks that I've asked to come down? Is it registering, Dia? It says okay. Steve? It says okay? All right. So this one is looking like a battery.
The little R is flashing. Do you mean the little R?
Okay, Steve, yours is working. The, the Y stays on the vote state and it disappears. Okay? Who else do we have? This gentleman down here?
Mine, mine, mine failed. But it seems to be working.
Okay, did it say Y?
Okay, we'll check that.
I said no.
We'll see that.
Okay, you want to vote now? Okay, we can, we can check that.
All right. The green light's still on, so we pass.
Has everybody, has everybody voted?
Okay, we need to get Ruth, I'm sorry.
All come to your seats, all come to your seats, okay? Yep. And yours did register?
I worked it wrong.
Okay, so it didn't work on the president. I'm less concerned with that.
Worst cases, we do vote.
We're going to close this vote. You go back to your seat, we'll try another. Let's check it. All right, test vote. 127, 25.
I want to see if any of the folks who came forward, their votes are still not represented.
John's registered, I see him.
She's getting a new clicker right now, so we're expecting that.
So I'm just going to have to go into the roster to look like they're very good.
Yep, yep, it's okay.
That's fine.
Did anybody whose vote not show up?
Did everyone's vote show up? Of the people who rose up for the presence and attendance? All right, we're getting thumbs up. All right, let's keep going, that's exciting. All right, the question of Mr. Johnson is still up with Town Meeting. To the Select Board, can you please answer Mr. Johnson's question regarding the net revenue and the expenses in the future?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So, Mr. Johnson, I understand you have a two-part question, so I'm going to answer one part of it and then call on Chris Galetta to answer the second. The first part that I will answer is the gross revenue versus net revenue, and where we come in at the waterfall. During negotiations, we discussed this multiple times. It is our understanding that no financing would be issued if we were given a gross percentage, because a bank and a permanent loan financier would want to see where their position was as we went through the years of the process. And if we were taking a gross percentage, that would not be obtainable. So we had to settle for net revenue, but we did, with the payoff rent, end up higher up on the Waterfield, the waterfall, with the 8% return as equal footing with the developers. So the developer doesn't get paid their 8% return on their investment if we don't get our 8%, which we anticipate would be a guaranteed payment for the first 13 years of the project of approximately $40,000. And that's how we got to the extra $500,000. Chris, if you want to just talk about depreciation?
Thank you. I think the second question was about depreciation and whether that is a reduction of gross revenue down to net operating revenue. By my read of the agreement, the definitions of operating expenses do not include depreciation. They are cash expenses that are deducted, depreciation being a non-cash expense, that we don't, would not fall into the definition of net operating revenue.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, do you have any follow-up questions? Okay, thank you very much. Further on the question, we next have Mr. DeLeo. Yes? We have two speakers that remain in line. Town Meeting members, is there a second? There is a second. We do need to take the vote to move the vote. For everyone, at this time, I'm going to actually try a voice vote first. And for those who know, moving the vote moves it immediately. It takes those two that are in line out of line, and we go immediately to voting. So at this time, we're voting to end all debate and discussion on the article before us. All those in favor? All those opposed? It requires a 2/3s vote. At this time, I need you to take your clickers out. All right, anyone, if you're in the cafeteria, please join us. We are doing, once again, a vote to determine if we would like to end the debate and all discussion and then move to the vote. It requires a 2/3s majority. Hit green if you are in favor, red if you are not. Look for the little box of "OK." Yes? If you are voting "yes," it means that you are asking to terminate the debate and move directly to the vote of the motion for the lease. If you vote "no," it means that you want to hear from the remaining members of Town Meeting who would like to address you. With 164 members voting, 110 required to pass. We have 52 in the affirmative, 112 in the negative. The negative has it, and the motion fails. Further on the question, Mr. DeLeo.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. My name is Heidi Ratzstein DeLeo, Precinct 5. So I wasn't really planning on speaking tonight, so I've been writing during this whole break. Parking's an issue. Project's not going to solve that. However, we've been discussing the Waterfield Lot for about 10 years. We solicited RFPs and debated for years now. As a longtime resident and a downtown small business owner, I feel this is the best compromise. Not everybody's going to be happy here. We need affordable housing, we need parking, and retail is struggling. Construction costs are rising, we lost safe harbor, and there's a huge lack of affordable housing. I'm fortunate to live in this town. I'm a single parent who raised a son in a community where I never thought I would be able to be. I became involved in this community to hopefully leave it a better for its future children and residents. I bought when I was married, and post-divorce could never afford to be here as a single parent without help from family. Please don't put this project off any longer. I want you to seriously think how detrimental a no vote would be. Give an opportunity to open our community to others. It may be the only opportunity we have to welcome people like me, who will fight for you and your kids, to Winchester. We need to view this as an opportunity to better our community. I ask you to please support this article.
Thank you. Further on the question, Mr. Mucci?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Rich Mucci, Precinct 6. I rise as an individual, not as a member of the Select Board, so my views necessarily don't reflect the Select Board. First, I've had a unique vantage point for this whole entire project for the last 18 months. And I just, I wanted to say thank you to all of you, and the community as a whole, because, you know, this process has restored my faith in democracy. It started at Town Meeting last year. It went to a public referendum. From there, we had the Waterfield Task Force. We had, you know, further discussions at the Select Board table that we saw, and, you know, here we are tonight. And to build off what Mr. Meganaro said, it didn't just stop at the public referendum last year. We made changes since that vote. We heard from many of you about the different aspects of the projects and what was important to the community. And to me, it's been a beautiful thing to see this process unfold. And, you know, whether you're, whatever side you're on on this issue, you know, you should be, you should be happy about that process and celebrate it and not chastise it. I know it's been painful at times. I know it's been frustrating at times, no matter where you fall on this issue, but it's democracy. It truly is. And we're lucky to have it in our town under these circumstances. This is a true compromise. It's a collaboration. It was, it should be celebrated. There's little, if you're a little upset today, if you have some doubts, I think that's a good thing. You know, in my line of work, anytime we settle a case, everyone's, you know, always a little miserable. But ultimately, it's usually a good settlement, and, you know, two years, three years down the road, people understand that that was the right result. So, you know, this is, as many mentioned tonight, a settlement. You all have the opportunity tonight to finish the job and move our town forward and continue this journey together by voting "yes." You have the opportunity to be bold. How often in life do you have, do you have to make a decision without all the answers? When you do so, it involves trust. Trust in the process, trust in people, and trust in the idea. Trust that this democratic process, with all its warts that we have seen over the last year, will continue to guide us on this journey. This process has led us to this moment in time. We started out at one point looking at five different proposals as they came in. From there, we selected Civico. From that moment in time, Civico has been a willing partner to negotiate with the town and listen to the people's concerns all the way through this moment. Think about that for a moment. Every one of you who's had a say in this project, who's rose to talk, has influenced this deal that we have here today. You've been heard. We have listened. Civico has listened. And as a result, we have a compromise. Maybe it's not the perfect project. Maybe the perfect project doesn't exist. But there are many out there that think that if we went to an RFP, that we would find that perfect project. As I stand here today, and as we represent all the citizens of this town, not just the people that voted in the referendum, not just you sitting here, we have to think about the silent majority and what's best for the town. In doing so, I think in this debate, we've hit on every point and every side of this issue. This is why this project will never be perfect in anyone's eyes. We should feel good about that. A yes vote at this moment in time on this article for the stated purpose will allow us all to claim victory and feel some good. We will feel like a true community. If you are considering voting "no" tonight, I ask you to search your soul and really ask why. What are you really chasing? What are you hoping for? What do you want? Is that unknown deal a reason you are voting "no" better than joining your fellow residents and supporting our compromise and collaboration? Ask yourself, what kind of town do you want to dedicate yourself to? The kind of town I want to dedicate myself is the one that we are here tonight in trying to build true community by voting "yes." So please join us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mucci. That appears to be the end, that there are no other Town Meeting members who are arising. With that, I believe that you are ready for the question. Yes? Yes? No, it does not. Yeah, it's 1, yeah, it's 110. Correct. A 2/3s vote of the members present is required. Members who are outside of the auditorium, please make your way to us so that we can prepare the vote. This is the vote for Article 2, for the town to vote to authorize the Select Board to enter. Yes? It's 2/3s of those who vote "yes" or "no." The abstains do not count towards the 2/3s vote. Back again. So this vote is to see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to enter into the land development agreement for the Waterfield parking lot. It requires a 2/3s vote. And when we're ready, and the green light turns on, you can use your clickers. Green means you are in favor and you would like the Select Board to enter into the land development agreement. No means you are not in favor and you do not want the Select Board to go into a land development agreement for the Waterfield Lot. Please cast your votes now and look for the "OK" box. It is tiny. With 166 members present and voting, 111 are required to pass. There are 119 in the affirmative and 47 in the negative. The motion passes. My fellow Town Meeting members, thank you so much for your patience through the clickers. We are going to roll through for you before we adjourn. That is it. Thank you so much, Town Meeting members. I look forward to seeing you back in the fall. May I have a motion to adjourn and dissolve the meeting? Second, thank you so much. Enjoy your evenings. Scroll again? You want to scroll again?
All right, everybody. Good evening, once again. I'm Alan Idon. You are watching Winchester's special town meeting here on June 6th, 2022. We dealt with one article tonight. Town Meeting has just adjourned, and that one article for this special town meeting was to vote on approval or disapproval of the town's agreement with Civico Development for a land development agreement for the Waterfield parking lot in downtown Winchester, along with a 99-year lease on the land for whatever, what gets built on the land. So we opened our presentation tonight, opened the Town Meeting tonight with a presentation from Michael Betancourt. He said it's a one-acre parcel. There is an LDA, Land Development Agreement, and lease with Civico, or has been negotiated with a company called Civico. He said in history, the forest, the prospect of a huge development off Forest Street triggered the need to develop at least 40 units of affordable housing a year to stay in what the state calls "safe harbor" to be able to turn down oversized 40B project. This was also a trigger to the MBTA. This project was also a trigger to the MBTA committing $55 million to rebuild the Winchester train station. Now, the initial agreement was approved by Town Meeting, but it was overturned by a referendum, so a task force was formed to renegotiate it. So in the renegotiated plan here, 60 units, 60 apartments, of which 40 are affordable. Eighty-five parking spaces were increased to 119. A $1 million payment from Civico was increased to 1.5 million. It's a four-story building. Fifty percent of them are studio apartments, which would probably have less impact on the schools. And the rate, the commission paid to the town from Civico will go from 10% to 15%. We heard the town will get approximately $5.7 million over 15 years in the form of taxes and lease. Value of parking adds about $3 million. And there's a high percentage of local resident preference, which was also discussed later on in the meeting. We heard from the Finance Committee in their report, they said there's a need to balance financial return, affordable housing, and other factors like parking and sustainability. The timeline, this project would probably be completed sometime in 2026, because it can't be built at the same time as the train station rebuild, which is... The timeline, this project would probably be completed sometime in twenty-twenty-six because it can't be built at the same time as the train station rebuild, which is scheduled to complete in twenty-twenty-four. Rebidding would extend the timeline and the costs, so the finance committee ended up voting eight to three in favor of this project. Planning board voted four to zero in favor of it. Said it is consistent with the master plan and zoning, sustainability, and will add to the vibrancy of the town center. Also approving it was the Housing Partnership Board unanimously. Housing meets the needs of seniors, younger adults, and persons with disabilities. It'll support local businesses. It has seventy-one private parking spa, uh, public, excuse me, public parking spaces, and is consistent with the master plan and center business district zoning. Anthony Conde, who was recognized earlier in the meeting after over thirty years of service to the town meeting, and this will be his last one, spoke and thanked the town meeting for a standing round of applause, but said the town should not be desperate and sell this property. Paul Maganaro said we should honor the results of the townwide voting. Opposing the original deal should have a new RFP, Request for Proposals and Bids, and the town would gain more revenue, but he also ended up saying, "Vote your conscience." So we had comments from numerous town meeting members. Some of them, one said a task force would make a good, made a good compromise. The townwide vote was close, but we should be proud of our diverse needs that are addressed in this project. Makes our wonderful town more accessible, accessible, rather. Town meeting member Dobbins said, "Do not need a parking-style development hovering over downtown," in his words. Another town meeting member supports wholeheartedly adding affordable housing to the center. "If not now, when?" was asked. Tom Hanley, though not a town meeting member, is Chair of the Council on Aging. He said the council recommends the benefits to Winchester's older residents will allow some to live in the heart of a community that they've grown up in, or grown old in, rather, and offer daily engagement with others. It's a unique opportunity, in his words. Another town meeting member said it would dramatically change the downtown, thinks we can do better and should be rebid. Lance Grenzewak, in his comments, said, "We've been trying to revitalize the Waterfield lot for over twelve years." The town is said, town is said to add housing in the center. The zoning require, has encouraged that. It brings customers to downtown business, more affordable housing in similar developments than, than in similar developments, but not a large three-hundred-unit development. He said, in his, he urged the town meeting to approve it and move on and said it was unlikely to get a better deal. Another town meeting member who was on the task force said the new proposal meets the requirements that, that the residents seem to be looking for. Another town meeting has said local preference is important. Said the developer gets to choose local preference. In response to that, the developer actually said the town can determine its own local preference. Local preference being giving preference to current residents of the town, town employees, and employees of town businesses, and families that have students in Winchester schools. The developer, Mike Betancourt from the select board, said the town will absolutely request seventy percent local preference. Another community member, he said he was the member of Students for Affordable Housing. He enjoyed the experience, he said he enjoyed the experience of growing up and educating in Winchester and felt that denying other students the same opportunity was not appropriate. This deal is not perfect, but best for the goals that the town has set. Artie Benos, a member of the local business community, said parking is critical and they're already losing spaces before this and urged opposition to it. School committee member said that every day we delay, we deny people the, the chance to live in town, and it's within our power to correct that. We had a brief recess to take care of some technical details in the voting system. Just after the recess, the question was moved, but the, to terminate debate, but that failed. We heard, our last speaker was Rich Mucci, the Chair of the Board of Selectmen, and he said the whole process is, in his words, "Restored my faith in democracy." It's an opportunity to move the town forward and be bold. Trust the process and, in his words, "Do what's best for the town." And then came the vote. Yes, one-hundred-and-nineteen. No, forty-seven, with mention, more than the two-thirds. The project was approved. And that was the one article for tonight's special town meeting. Next town meeting will be sometime in the fall and we will cover that. Want to remind you once again, you're watching WinCam, Winchester's viewer-supported television. We thank you for that. To learn more and how you can support our mission, go to www.wincam.org. So for all the crew down here at the high school, the WinCam crew, I bid you a happy summer. And I'm Alan Idon. Be safe.